All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Town of Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals for April 3, 2024. This is our motion to open.
So motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are off and running. So we're going to change up the agenda slightly, just do it out of order, just for some attendees that will be here later in the night. We're going to start with application 2024-4 continued for 944 Salem Street approving approval and potential signing of the decision. Do you want to bring us up to speed on where we are?
Yes, so at our last meeting, the board approved the special permit or approved to issue a special permit for 944 Salem Street. That was the GML co-op for utility vehicles. And so I drafted it up, I sent it off to the board, they got in their meeting packet, and then I also sent it off to Kevin Snow, who's the representative for the project. And there was kind of only one remaining question, and it was around the operating hours. And the board didn't really specifically touch on that in the meeting. The typical industrial zone hours are 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. But due to the nature of the work that they're anticipating to do, such as, you know, repair works during snowstorms, power outages, things of that nature, they want to be able to operate 24/7 on those during those emergency circumstances. So I had drafted up that condition to read. The hours of operation shall be limited to typical industrial zone hours, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., but are able to operate outside of those hours during emergency situations.
Makes sense.
So, and then I added, you know, the stipulations that we spoke about for the seven criteria and then just, you know, that are kind of more boilerplate items, so.
All right. Any questions by the board?
Is there any abutters? Oh, that was pretty.
Yes, Lord Vader?
I was just wondering, is there any of them?
No, we didn't have any at our last meeting either. There weren't any abutters who were present at the last meeting either.
Right.
Question.
Yeah, and the electric company came and they were strongly in favor of moving forward with it.
Okay.
Public comment?
Well, same as the town owns the building, I guess I could comment.
You need a microphone.
All right, Annie, do we need another vote on approval, I'm assuming? For the exchange wordage, verbiage?
Um, I think if the, I mean, the board already approved to issue a special permit. It's really just finalizing the verbiage and then signing it. So it depends on if the board wants to just sign it or.
All right, so since you already approved, I think we're good then. All right, so we'll go ahead and sign that.
I'll pass it around at the end of the meeting, just.
Thank you. All right. Next, approvals minutes from December 6, January 3, and March 6, 2024 meeting, sorry, December 6, 2023, January 3, March 6, 2024 meeting minutes. Did everyone have a chance to peruse?
They were awesome. Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
May I accept it? Annie, town planner update.
All right. For our town planner update, we just received a application for S.D. Park. They're looking to add an additional building at the site. So they received a special permit through the zoning board to do that back in 2014. So it's going to be a modification, a major modification to that special permit. So it will be noticed in the newspaper, notification will go out to abutters, et cetera, et cetera. As I mentioned, I only just got that today, so I'm still reviewing it to make sure everything's in the application that needs to be. But you can expect to see that at the April 1 meeting. Other than that, it is a busy time of year here at Town Hall. We, on April 24, it's candidate's night. On April 29, it's town meeting. And then on May 6, it is elections, for local elections. Dates to be aware of.
And Friday, we have the V.C.
Yes, thank you. On Friday, from 1 to 4 p.m., there is a VZ Visioning Center session up at VZ to talk about the future of VZ Park and what folks want to see up there. The initiative is being led by a consultant that the town hired through CPC funds at a project that was voted at the last annual town meeting. This will be the, this will be the first, there will be another at a different time to ensure that, you know, folks who work during the day are able to make it. So we're looking at an evening or a weekend for that second engagement session. Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome. All right, and are there any other items not reasonably anticipated?
There were not.
Gentlemen, any other items? So at this point, I think I will sit on motion to recess for 10 minutes. We're waiting for the applicant to arrive for the other topic.
Okay.
Do we need to vote?
I think we'll take a 10-minute recess, how was that?
Chris is right, you do have to motion and then vote.
Oh, okay, so motion to take a recess until the applicant arrives.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board is in recess? All right, I'm making motion to reopen the meeting for the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals, April 3, 2024.
So motion.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are back. All right, next on the agenda, a new application, 2024-5 for 68 Elm Park. A public hearing in accordance with MGL Chapter 48 as amended for the application 2024-5 made by Rod Rivera of 97 B Street, Malden, for the premises located at 68 Elm Park, Groveland map 10 lot 013, located in the business zoning district for a special permit in accordance with Section 50.4.5 Table of Uses of the Groveland zoning bylaw to operate a restaurant.
That was the same thing I read last night.
Who read it better?
You did, you win.
That's a lie.
Good evening, this is Rod Rivera. I'm a construction supervisor, and I'm also a designer. And I'm going to be helping them with the management part of this restaurant. So we're just asking for release to allow us to keep the restaurant and also do it as a sports bar. We, intentions are to just keep the place open from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. from Sunday to Thursday, and from Friday to Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to midnight if possible. It was always a restaurant. We're just going to change the design on it and make it an authentic Mexican restaurant with, there are some amenities for the, our customers and just have a sports bar so everybody can enjoy the time there. The lady's going to be, she's actually the owners. The two gentlemen on that side and the mother, they're the owners. And she's going to be running the kitchen. And we're going to, we have a different person that's going to be helping us with the bar area if it gets approved. And I'll be just handling the business management part of it. So it's not like I'll be in and out, just helping them out. That's about it.
All right, thank you. Questions from the board? For the applicant?
Is, is the, the number of seats in the restaurant changing significantly from what was there?
I don't recall what the actual numbers were. But from my experience, we take a measurement, we'd separate, we deduct the walk path for them, and then we come up with a number, and then we divide it by 15. That's what give us the numbers for seating. And we do the same thing for the kitchen. We take the square footer of the kitchen divided by 200. That gives you how many people could be in that kitchen. And the same thing for the buyer. So we came up with the number that we are asking for. And I believe I have it. But it's, I, yeah, so we are asking for 31, the occupancy of 31 people. Just let me make sure I'm saying this right. No, I'm sorry.
50 total.
50 total, I'm sorry, yes.
And have you addressed the concerns about parking in the area?
So that was yesterday's subject. We will do a little more legwork. Yesterday, when I, when we left here yesterday, I went over there, took a picture, and it was empty. We're going to be doing the same thing in random days, just to check more towards the weekends and see how that goes into the 26. And then hopefully, we could get a better answer for you guys on the 26.
23rd, I think. So John, if you add this up, it looks like there's 35 seats. 16 at the bar, three over here, four over here.
Yeah, the total occupancy includes the kitchen staff.
There are 42 seats proposed, and in the last restaurant, there were 24 seats.
Thank you.
But I'm looking at the plan, Annie. And the plan dictates, if you count the seats, it could come up with 35. I'm thinking two, I'm thinking four at the booth. That's 12.
But then you have to come for staff and management.
Yeah, you have to have, we're going to have two waiters or waitresses.
Yep.
On the floor. And then there'll be.
Two bartenders, 16 seats.
Most of the time, probably be one, but yes, we would like to have two people in the bar.
That's 39. Kitchen staff.
Kitchen staff.
Two.
Sorry?
Kitchen staff, two.
Sometimes three, because you have one prepping, one washing dishes, and the other one cooking.
That's what I was going to do, two cooking, one washing dishes, so three. That's 40.
Depends the volume, because sometimes you may end up needing extra hands. And the other places that we manage, it's, sometimes we have up to six people working.
It's 42.
So they're covered by the 50 they're asking for?
What's the people standing, that's not seats?
Right, exactly, but still capacity, right, so, yeah.
I don't think that the space will hold in, one, that by code, you won't be able to have more people because of the the sizes of the doors. So anything closer towards 99 would be, you know, like 72-inch doors. And we don't, we don't have a way of doing that in that place.
Even 40 is going to be stuffed.
I mean, I tend to agree, I don't, I don't see that space holding.
50.
You know, 50, but for, you know, for sake of, for sake of using our round number, I think I I don't know that we need to worry about capping the capacity for.
I don't think so either. What do you think of the town, the hours?
I mean, the hours, I mean, for, I don't necessarily have an issue with it. Myself, at least.
There's no.
I don't know what the standard hours are in the business.
10:00 p.m., correct, Danny?
What did Pub 97 get for hours?
I can look that up in a second, Brad. In the business zone, the typical hours are 7:00 a.m. or 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
Pub 97 was granted midnight on the weekends?
No. They were Thursday through, Sunday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to midnight, Friday through Saturday, 7:00 to 1:00 a.m.
Have they opened their week?
Oh, to be honest, functionally, I don't, I don't know. I don't think I've ever driven by there at 1:00 a.m.
Correct, they don't have any residential abutters.
No, but the, this restaurant has residential abutters, Elm Park.
I know, he was talking about Pub 97.
Right, right.
So that's our extension, that would functionally be like the extension for two days a week, then?
Yep. I think that's reasonable.
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Rod.
I'm sorry, you said the next meeting is the 21st?
23rd.
23rd, I believe.
For the planning board, not for the zoning board.
I think you were referring to planning.
Yeah.
That's for the parking.
Correct, parking reductions on the 23rd.
You know, part of our oversight too is addressing the parking and traffic flow, correct?
Traffic, I was, from what I remember, was traffic, I'm sorry, the parking space, the dumpster, in agreement between the landlord and us.
No, I think what he's saying is that part of our purview for the zoning board is, is traffic flow safety, including parking, including parking and loading.
Yeah. So would we want to wait on the outcome of the planning board or before we have that information?
I mean, I don't know that we need to wait, but I, but I think we'd be comfortable in that that is being handled by that board and that the outcome of the board's decision should suffice.
Sounds good.
Public comment?
Ultimately, you know, I don't see any problem with the hours.
Can you state your name and address for record, please?
Don Gruney, 2 Mill Street Extension, Groveland. You know, where the company I work for has the property across the street. We do have tenants upstairs. The old diner building has, I think, four tenants upstairs. But I mean, other than that, I don't think where they're going to be is going to be a problem for that. Who grants the liquor license?
That's, the town grants it.
The Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
Okay, do we still have permit, I mean licenses, okay? Because before, we didn't. We only had like two, I think, in the whole town. But, you know, the hours, they sound like they go along with what the tea garden, I mean, they're up to midnight as well, I think, on most nights. They have a similar bar.
And if the, they don't have business after 10, chances are that I don't stay.
They initially only asked for, you know, hours up till like 9 o'clock. But then, you know, some of the town office people in the town hall suggested that they have longer hours, like say the Super Bowl's playing. You know, they'd want to be able to have, not kick people out at 9 o'clock when they've been there for half hour.
This is at the tea garden?
That was with the tea garden, you know, so those, those hours were adjusted. But they're not required to have a sprinkler system, I don't think, for that size space, right?
That's going to be up to Sam, that's not up to us.
Okay.
It's 7,500 square feet, I believe.
Okay.
You know, that's.
Well, if it's over 25% of the building being renovated, then they have to bring it up to code.
Up to today's code.
I think they told me 25, but you could be right.
The building inspector is requiring a Chapter 34 inspection on this.
Okay.
So it's all handled through the building inspector.
And that'll be part of the fire department too, I mean, so you'll have to, whatever NFPA is, code. So that's, that's not up to our board.
No, no, I, I'm just saying, I, you know, it can get past certain hurdles here and they still have.
Right, and then it could get.
Right. I mean, the parking's one hurdle, which we talked about last night. You know, it's just, it's too bad the building owner doesn't have the proper amount of parking for his tenants. I know we had to, but, you know, as you said earlier, that's why you want to change things, but.
Does that, you know, you can go on further, saying does that restaurant have a Halon system with those, where there's a hood and?
Yeah, but again, that's going to be taken care of by the building inspector, so.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I, like I said before, I'd hate to see them spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to put a restaurant in and then not have any place for people to park, or people not show up and support them, you know?
It's.
I know, it's, it's.
It's not up to us, I mean.
I realize that, I'm more worried about them. So, but at any rate, other than that, I mean, I'm not against businesses. I just want everyone to be on the same playing field.
Thank you.
Do you have any more comment, Rod? Did Sam do his walkthrough with you guys yet?
No, he has not, I just, I was trying, I had a hard time getting to the, navigating to the portal.
Rod, you need to be speaking into a microphone.
I'm just curious, is there anything for the board?
Right, so I actually had a hard time navigating to the portal and submitting some stuff that I needed to submit that he was asking for. But I emailed him with all that information directly to him. I have not gotten anything from him yet, as of yet. So I'm hoping that he'll respond soon, and then we'll do a walkthrough of the property. And then we'll do whatever he's, he'll tell us to do. Okay. A lot of the, like, a lot of the equipment's already existing, so we're not really touching much of that. We're just going to do the new handicap bathrooms, because they had the smaller bathrooms in the far back. But that's about it. We're not really changing anything to the building, or inside it.
Thank you.
All right, so what I'd like to do is go through the seven points of the, you know, considerations for the special approval, just to make sure that we're okay with all the special, all the points, rather?
Sure.
All right, point one, social, economic, and community needs, which are served by the proposal?
Yes.
So I'll agree on that?
Yep.
All right, number two, traffic flow safety, including parking and loading. So as we said, that's being examined by the planning, the planning board. I think, you know, for our purposes, we're, we're okay deferring to the planning board for that, for that decision?
Yep.
Adequacy of public utilities and other public services?
Yep.
We're okay there. Neighborhood, neighborhood character and social structures?
Yes.
Yep, doesn't change.
Impacts on the natural environment, I don't think there are any impacts on the natural environment there. Impacts on the natural environment, I think, I don't think there are any impacts on the natural environment there.
Nope.
Potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base and employment.
Positive.
Yeah, all positive there. Consistency with the Town of Groveland Community Development Plan or the Town of Groveland Master Plan.
Yes.
I think Development and Elm Park was part of that master plan as well, so. So I think we're, I think we're satisfied on our seven points there. Anybody, anyone want to fly a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve application number 2024-5 for a special permit in accordance with Section 50-4. Dot five, Table of Uses of the Groveland zoning bylaw to operate a restaurant.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion passes.
Congratulations.
23rd.
23rd for planning.
Mr. Chair, should we should I draft up a set of conditions that we can look at with the applicant and the board before we issue it to make sure we're all on the same page?
Yeah, I think that would be
Okay, because we didn't talk about any conditions for this permit before you made the motion. Just a note.
What would be the conditions that you'd want to condition?
Hours and stuff.
Well, the hours, I know for other restaurants, we Say it again? I can't hear you.
Imagine they mimic what's, what was there for
Pub 97 and your place and ours, but we just didn't discuss that at all. So do we want to not close the public hearing on this and leave it open so we can discuss with the applicant those conditions?
All right. Yes, please. Thank you. All right. So we took care of everything else, Annie, anything else before we wrap?
So let's just, just to get things straight, we're going to leave the public open.
So, so, so we're going to, we're going to draft the decision with the, the conditions we discussed, then leave it, leave it open at the, at the next meeting, which is, I mean, before I kick the date here?
The 24th?
No, May 1st.
May, May 1st, that's, that's the first, that's the Wednesday, right? Yeah, May 1st. On, on May 1st, we'll, we'll ratify the, the motion and the signature?
If the board wants, well, we, we're going to have to have a meeting May 1st anyway for that, our S C Park, but if we want, for the applicant's sake, since they're going to be here on April 23rd and we do have some overlap with the boards, we could have an early zoning board meeting on the 23rd to just go through the conditions, because I can't imagine it would take a long time.
A dual meeting, you mean?
No. Separate, just before, planning starts at 7, have the zoning board start at 6 or something like that.
Yeah, 6:30, then we're right into it, yeah.
Or something along those lines, I don't know, John, you're the only non-overlap here tonight, because John Stokes isn't here this evening, so I don't know if Tuesdays are a bad day for you or not, but
Oh, that would work. Hello, what did you say it was?
23rd.
23rd, yep.
All right, sounds good, so 23rd at 6:30?
Yes.
That'll be the first one and then, and then that'll be before the planning, the same night, that starts at 7.
So should we re-motion and have it?
Continued.
So we can condition the decision?
Annie, do we need to re-motion that?
I think we do.
Let me
Exactly, exactly, that's what I was getting at.
What was it?
Should we just do it now, I mean, should we?
If you want to, I just
Do you have the conditions for Pub 97?
I
So we're going to, you know what, we're going to rescind that last motion then.
You'd have to vote to do that.
All right. You'd like to fly a motion?
Fly a motion to rescind the
The previous approval.
Previous approval. Because we did not put any conditions in there.
I second it.
All those in favor to rescind the previous motion?
Hold on, sorry, I'm in, I'm talking to the town administrator who was also a planner.
All right, well, that, that motion has passed, so the previous motion has now been rescinded.
Okay, so okay, you need to, so we can, we can hold off until the 23rd, I think, and then at that meeting, we can approve the decision, because I believe John's first motion was to approve the application. So we will just need to then approve the decision, okay, you can approve the, okay. Yes, you can approve the application and then we approve the decision, you can, you approve, you can approve the conditions within the decision on the 23rd.
Okay, I just, right.
Right, so now we need a new motion to approve the, approve the application.
I have no idea. Yes, no.
You know what, John, fly the
Just to bring it full circle, let's
Do a full circle, yeah, John, fly the motion to, I would fly the motion just to approve the application.
Okay, so let me make
Approve the application pending a decision and conditions.
Correct.
Let me make a motion to approve the application 2024-5 for a special permit in accordance with Section 50.4.5 Table of Uses of the Groveland zoning bylaw to operate a restaurant pending conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:09 p.m.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, folks.